It is, yeah. But we usually let him speak. We'll ask, I'll ask. This is regarding sampling, the sampling of tobacco. It's an agenda item. But we usually let him speak. But we could ask him, do you want him to speak at the agenda items? Yeah, let's, we'll ask him to do that. We're not on the air yet, though. City manager, I believe we're supposed to be on the air yet, but I don't see the sign. I don't see the "on the air" sign. That's why I haven't started the meeting. I don't know, it should be here. There's a couple more people coming in. We are, okay. I guess, I guess the light's not working. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regular city council meeting of November. I call this meeting to order. Note the attendance, please. We have an open forum. I have three folks for the open forum, but there is a Chris here. Chris, we have this item as an agenda item, and if you would please just wait, we would certainly hear your, your comments then. Okay. So first up would be Ms. Barnes. Would you please come up, state your name and address, and don't forget to sign in, please. And then you have approximately three minutes.
Some of you know me better than others. I'm really nervous with all the policemen in here. The reason why I'm here this evening is because when Seventy-Sixth Street was rebuilt, we have been having a driveway issue. I've been trying to deal with the city for a year now. It was put in not level, and so we don't, it doesn't drain. And so last year after my husband's little minor stroke, and this year he's battling cancer on his head, and now it's too late to do anything with my driveway. So, of course, he was deer hunting, and I'm out there, the one doing the slush. So I'm just wondering, I spoke with the gentleman that takes Liz's place when she's gone, and my suggestion was if, when the plow comes down the path, if they could just maybe push our snow better, so that we don't have the lake. Because they're, they're very well aware, aware that we have this lake at the end of our driveway.
I'm sure it shows.
Yeah. So that's, that's all I'm asking, is that we get it, the issue solved.
Okay. I'll ask the city manager to follow up with this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Alicia, are you here?
I have a tricky name. It's Alicia Leisinger. And I am a new, relatively new resident to Richfield. I moved, my husband and I purchased a home here in April. And I just, so my background is in public health. I have a master's in public health, and I work in tobacco prevention. And I just wanted to share some new information about e-cigarettes, sort of all the buzz these days.
And your address?
Oh, yes, it's seventy-two hundred Fourteenth Avenue South.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And today, numbers were released that show teenagers are using these products at really high levels, like twenty-eight percent report using an e-cigarette. And I'm concerned about the products, but mostly I am, I'm here to ask you to consider prohibiting their use in public places. I really like to go to a few restaurants in particular in Richfield, and just want to put that out there, that it's possible for you to act prior to the state, and would appreciate consideration of that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That concludes the open forum. We'll address the other one in the agenda item. At this time, I'd like everyone to stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask for approval of the special concurrent city council and HRA work session of October twentieth, twenty-fourteen, the special city council meeting of October twenty-eighth, twenty-fourteen, the special city council work session of October twenty-eighth, twenty-fourteen, and the regular city council meeting of twenty, of October twenty-eighth, twenty-fourteen. So move.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. We have several presentations tonight, starting with the presentation of the public community assessment and prioritizing of community health needs in Richfield. Looking forward to this.
Excellent. Good evening. My name's Kirsten Johnson, and I am one of the co-chairs of the Richfield Advisory Board of Public Health. So I'm here to talk about an assessment and prioritization thing that we did last year regarding kind of the issues that are concerning Richfield specifically, as, you know, proposed by the City of Bloomington Public Health Assessment. So to start out, I'm going to go over the, kind of, why we do this. The statutory requirement is that the Local Public Health Act of two thousand and three states that we require, were required to have community health boards to complete an assessment of community health needs. So that's what Bloomington did, is that through data and surveys and research and things, came up with our needs. Seek community input on health issues and priorities. We did that both with the citizens who are on the advisory board of health, and then we did some e-surveys that some people may have received in emails. We did it at community service, at churches and community centers and things like that, to get input about what issues are important to citizens. Then we established the local public health priorities based on the identified community health needs, and we came up with eleven, the Richfield's top eleven. So actually, piggybacking off of Alicia, tobacco, tobacco and e-cigarettes is one of our priorities, and we're going to be talking about this, this year. So it was actually, and it has been really controversial and kind of an issue that's still a fuzzy line, but we're hoping that Richfield does kind of spearhead and is a forefront on controlling that. So, thank you. Yeah, didn't even plan that. That's nice. The other top three we have include maternal and child health, specifically teen pregnancy, pregnancy assessments, getting maternal care in the first trimester, nutrition, obesity and physical activity. And that's all the way up from, you know, in the grade schools and earlier, all the way to senior care and keeping them active through, you know, later years. And the other in the top three is social and emotional well-being through the CHIP Action Team, which is the Community Health Improvement Program, and intensive home visits for people who might be in need. So we have the full list. Also, here, a little bit hard to read. Yeah, yeah. We also included on there sexual reproductive health, mental illness, the aging population, community clinics for seniors, alcohol, tobacco and drug use and abuse, intentional injury prevention, individual family emergency preparedness, and immunization and infectious disease prevention. So you can see we have our hands full, but we're not doing this alone on the board. We're engaging with community partners and others who are willing and able to help us out there. So then the next steps are address and implement the essential local public health activities, which is what we're doing with the other groups, and address local public health priorities to achieve statewide outcomes within the limits of available funding, which we apply for grants every year, and that's part of why we're doing this. So what we're asking of the city council is to accept the findings of the Richfield Advisory Board of Public Health's top eleven issues for submission to the Minnesota Department of Health, so that we can include this on our grant funding for the periods of 2015 to 2019.
Also move? Second. Discussion? Now, this is great work. I think you guys do fabulous work. I'm the liaison. I just love this commission. You guys are so on front and on top of things. It's so wonderful to see. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Let's see some grants.
Thank you very much. That's what we're going for.
Thank you. We have the annual meeting of the planning commission.
Madam Mayor and council members, first of all, I usually like to start out and just say thank you to the planning commission volunteers for doing a great job this year. This is a highlights from October till present, so we'll go through them one by one. Three pages this time, so bear with me. In October, we had an ordinance amendment considering the amendment to the city zoning ordinance to clarify noise attenuation requirements for new residential construction in two thousand seven, six oh, through six two and six three, or greater D and L contours. Ordinance amendment considering amendment to the city zoning ordinance incorporating Seventy-seventh Street underpass official right-of-way map for propose, or purposes of roadway planning beneath Trunk Highway Seventy-seven. And ordinance amendment consider amendment to the city zoning ordinance to change parking requirements for restaurants serving minimal alcohol that are located within shopping centers. November meeting was, had one item on it, six three three oh and sixty-four hundred Lyndale Avenue, formerly Lyndale Gardens. Amended the planned unit development request to increase allowable restaurant space at the future Lyndale Gardens redevelopment site. In December, site plan approval to allow pre-school daycare serving up to thirty-eight children at sixty-nine forty-nine Nicollet Avenue. January of two thousand and fourteen was One Hundred Sixty-sixth Street West, Up Center. Amended the planned unit development to allow a charter school serving students in grade six through twelve to operate in the former Bailey Total Fitness Building. And finding of consistency for Tiff District two thousand and four, or two thousand and fourteen dash one city garage site. In February, we had our organizational meeting. March, there was no meeting. April, amended planned unit development for Richfield Bloomington Honda at five oh one seventy-seven Street West. Amendment will allow additional parking on the roof of the Honda building, minor site changes and changes to the exterior building materials. A conditional use permit and variance for a telecommunications tower at nineteen oh one sixty-sixth Street East, which is the Public Works Building, and consider amendment to the zoning, the city zoning ordinance. The proposed ordinance would remove correct outdated terminology related to fitness centers and voltage requirements for home occupation, clarify a number of definitions, allow home occupations to operate within garages, correct, and add standardized a number of references, and add parking requirements for two-family and cluster housing. Developments, sorry, carries on. Revised setbacks in the service office district and clarify language related to drive-through facilities in the mixed-use districts, and clarifying screening and temporary banner requirements. No meeting in May. June was consideration of the two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and nineteen capital improvement program and finding of consistency with comprehensive plan of the capital improvement program and the two thousand and fifteen capital improvement budget. In July, we had a full slate. Consider request for a major amendment to a planned unit development plan for Lyndale Station Development at sixty-sixth Street and Lyndale. The amendment will consider details of a third building to be constructed at the southwest corner of property. Consider a request for a planned conditional use permit and variances for fireside pizza on Penn Avenue. The amendment and variances request approval of a thousand seventy-four square foot building addition. Consider a request for an amended conditional use permit and variances for the South Education Center on Penn Avenue. The amendment and variances would allow the school to add a playfield to the vacant lot between the school and, uh, school building and Penn Avenue. And consider an amendment to the city zoning ordinance that will eliminate the city's appointment hearing examiner positions and appoint the planning commission on the deciding body for variance applications beginning in two thousand and fifteen. August eleventh was a special meeting. Consider a request for an additional, amended conditional use permitted variances for the South Education Center at seventy-four fifty Penn Avenue. The amendment, amendment and variance would allow the school to add a soccer field to the vacant lot between the school building and Penn Avenue. Seems like the same one. Consider a request for amended conditional use permit and variance appeal for the fireside pizza at seventy, sixty-seven thirty-six at Penn Avenue. The amendment and variances are related to request for approval for a thousand seventy-four addition. The appeal request relieve the order control requirements. Consider a request for a major amendment to planned unit development plan for the Lyndale Station Development at sixty-sixth and Lyndale, or sixty-sixth, yeah, Street and Lyndale. The amendment considers details of the third building to be constructed at the southwest corner of the property. And consider amendment to the city zoning ordinance that will eliminate the city's appointed hearing examiner and, and appoint planning commission the deciding body. In September, considered request for a conditional use permit and variance for a building addition and reduce parking setback on seventy-five fourteen Lyndale Avenue Broadway Pizza. In consideration of resolution finding the sale of remnant properties along Richfield Parkway to adjacent landowners is consistent with the Richfield Comp Plan. And finally, in October, conditional use permit and variance related to the expansion of illegally non-conforming use of three oh eight seventy-eighth Street East Progress Valley. And consider land use applications related to construction of a new building for a place of worship at sixty-six oh one and sixty-six oh five First Avenue and sixty-six hundred and sixty-six oh eight Stevens Avenue. Amendments to the city zoning ordinance, proposed ordinance will more clearly define when an order control system is required for a new and expanding restaurant. And finally, consider an amendment to the city zoning ordinance, the proposed ordinance would add municipal parking lots to the list of permitted uses, the Penn Avenue Corridor Overlay District. And that completes my report.
Sounds like you were very busy.
We were, and it's nice to see that a lot of this stuff is going on right now.
Yeah.
So there's been a lot of big, big accomplishments going on. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any comments? No. Okay, at this time, I'd like Jay Hanthorn to join me at the mic.
I thought you'd, you'd face the Anis, because they're going to want to see you, not me. So this is us wearing them at the Oka Box. Here's your right hand. Pete F. I, Jay Hanthorn.
I, Jay Hanthorn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
The State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Richfield.
Of the city of Richfield.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties devolving upon me.
The duties devolving upon.
As the Director of Public Safety.
As the Director of Public Safety.
For the city of Richfield.
For the city of Richfield.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Regly.
Madam Mayor and City Council, I would be remiss if I did not mention these people who have got me here today. I'd like to thank my family, my immediate family, and my wife, Marissa, my children, my mother-in-law, and also my sister-in-law, and also my family in Winona, who was going to make the trek up Highway sixty-one, but unfortunately, due to the weather, could not. However, they will watch the taped delayed presentation. I would also like to thank my colleagues, past and present, past directors of public safety who are in the audience, who helped mentor me and give me the tools that I need to be successful, along with officers on this department, and also the well wishes that I received from community members throughout the last two weeks. I am privileged and honored to be the Director of Public Safety for the city of Richfield. Having started with the department when I was twenty years old, I literally grew up in this department and community. Through my career, I have experienced changes that have occurred in the city's infrastructure, commerce, and demographic makeup. As our department, police department mission statement reads, "To safeguard the lives and property of the people we serve, to reduce the incidence and fear of crime, and to enhance public safety while working with the community to improve their quality of life." As a public safety director, I will ensure you that we will continue to abide by our mission statement through a collaborative and transparent relationship with the community, businesses, other city departments, and elected officials.
We have a couple of past chiefs here. Would any of them like to come up and say a few words? I'm sure somebody's got a great Jay story. Come on, anybody want to come up? All right, come on, come on. Please.
Is this what we call a roast?
Yes.
Madam Mayor and City Council members, it was always an honor to serve this city, as I did for over thirty-six years. Came short of passing Chief Fritz, who served it for over thirty-seven years, but I do want to commend you on making an excellent selection. Director Hanthorn, I think will be a great leader for this department, and will bring it into the future.
Madam Mayor, council members and citizens, city manager. I basically watched these guys grow up with the department. I was here and interviewed Jay when he was hired initially in an oral, and I don't think I said on your oral board, but.
You wouldn't ever hug.
I think you all know as administrators that sometimes you can just tell when you first meet people whether or not they're going to be the type of person that can become a leader and that have the abilities to deal with people and to be successful in those pursuits. And I noticed that in Jay and Todd both, and it's just really, really, does my heart, I mean, I just feel really good about the fact that they have come through all these years and have been able to reach the pinnacle of the police career, and I'm very proud of both of them. And I'd just like to say that I haven't been back to Richfield for a while now, since Todd retired, but it's really good to be back there again and see some old friends.
Good to see. Good to see both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Madam Mayor, can I?
I think we need a picture with all three chiefs.
Oh, yes, we should get a picture with all three chiefs. All right, come on, come on.
I also wanted to acknowledge one of my other former bosses, Mike Hanson in the back room. Sergeant Mike Hanson.
Oh.
He's been gone, what, nineteen years now, Mike? Is that what I hear? Okay. He still lives here.
Wonderful. Their fault. Thank you so much. I'm so excited to see what, what the future brings for us. And I know that you've done a lot of special work, and we're going to use those talents for a lot of great things here. Looking forward to having further conversations with you about that. So, thank you. Thanks again. I will move the agenda. It's hard to follow that.
Second.
Any other conversations, comments? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have a very long consent calendar tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. For those in the audience, the consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion, and once the consent calendar has been approved, all the individual items and their recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further action on consent items would be necessary. Tonight, the consent calendar is extremely long, and I'll be really surprised if I can read through it without at least making a half a dozen mistakes, but here I'll try. Item A, consideration of the approval of the first reading of an ordinance increasing the number of on-sale wine licenses in the city from twelve to seventeen. Item B is consideration of the approval of the first reading of an ordinance increasing the number of on-sale three-two percent malt liquor licenses in the city from fifteen to twenty. And I just want to say for those people watching, this doesn't mean that we're instantly going to have a lot more facilities selling on-sale wine in three-two, but, but as we look at the development that's happening in the city, we want to make sure that the availability of those licenses, when people apply for them, would be there for the council to act on, and we're kind of bumping up to the limits that we have at this point. Item C is consideration of the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on December ninth, two thousand and fourteen, for the consideration of the renewal of on-sale wine and on-sale three-two percent malt liquor licenses for two thousand and fifteen, for Last Call Operating Company Two Incorporated doing business as Champs Americana, and that's at the Richfield Ice Arena location. Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC DBA, Chipotle Mexican Grill. Thompson's Fireside Pizza Incorporated doing business as Fireside Pizza. Joy's Thai Restaurant, Lurie at Lanes. The Noodle Shop Company, Colorado Incorporated DBA Noodles and Company at two locations. Patrick's Bakery and Cafe, Henry Two doing business as Red Pepper Chinese Restaurant. Item D is consideration of the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on December ninth, two thousand and fourteen, for the consideration of the renewal of on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses for two thousand and fifteen. For Last Call Operating Company Two Incorporated doing business as Champs Americana. Don Pablo's Operating Corporation doing business as Don Pablo's. Tejavon, oh, I lost my place. Don Pablo's, and then Tejavon Mexican Grill LLC DBA, El Tejavon Mexican Restaurant. Financial Guidance Incorporated doing business as Four Points by Sherton. Frenchman's Pub Incorporated doing business as Frenchman's. Willchire Restaurants LLC doing business as Houlihan's Restaurant and Bar. Kansmon Colian BBQ. Lynn Sixty-five LLC doing business as Lynn Sixty-five. Pizza Luce Seven Incorporated doing business as Pizza Luce. Minneapolis Richfield American Legion Post four thirty-five, and Fred Babcock Post five 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 doing business as Four Nichols Food and Drink. Item E, consideration of the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on December ninth, two thousand and fourteen, for the consideration and renewal of pawnbroker and secondhand goods dealer licenses for two thousand and fifteen, for University Cash Company LLC doing business as Avi's Pawn and Jewelry, and Metro Pawn and Gun Incorporated. Item F, consideration of the approval of a resolution for a grant from the Office of Justice Programs for bulletproof vests in the amount of four thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars and ten cents. Item G is consideration of the approval of the resolution for approval of a mutual aid pact with Hennepin County for the use of law enforcement personnel and equipment. Item H is consideration of the approval of the continuing agreement for two thousand and fifteen with Hennepin County and City of Richfield Public Safety Department's police for police cadet funds and joint, joint community policing partnership, JCPP programs, training funds. Item I is consideration of the approval and acceptance of master grant contract from the State of Minnesota Department of Health for the years two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and nineteen grant cycle that is designated to administratively simplify the review of grant agreements of local public health agencies. Item J, consideration of the approval of authorizing the purchase of pedestrian skilled streetlights for the Penn Avenue corridor between Trunk Highway sixty-two and Sixty-seventh Street, utilizing community development block grants in an amount not to exceed sixty-one thousand dollars. Item K, consideration of the approval of the first reading of an amendment to the city's zoning ordinance. The proposed amendment will add, quote, "municipal parking lots" to the list of permitted uses in the Penn Avenue Corridor Overlay District. And finally, item L, consideration of the approval of resolution determining the results of the city general election on Tuesday, November fourth, two thousand and fourteen. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move it.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I skipped over the discussion, excuse me, we'll go back to that. Councilmember Sandell, I believe that you actually had a couple of things you wanted to share with us.
I did. I have a letter or an email from the Melissa Madison of the Four-Ninety-Four Corridor Commission, and part of what their job is, in addition to serving as a lobbying group on behalf of the city, is to promote alternate forms of transportation, to encourage people to bicycle. to encourage people to bicycle, to carpool, and to use public transit. And they hosted a September 20 bike to the farmer's market in Richfield. And I just wanted to report back how many people actually did it. They had 80 people who biked to the farmer's market on that day. And anybody who did was eligible to win a $2, or to obtain a $2 off coupon. They gave out 62 coupons. And then in addition, they had 70 people who visited the commuter services table and talked with the Richfield Bike Advocates and the Tri-City Partners. So it was a very successful event. And in fact, I wanted to report it was even more successful than the one held in Bloomington, which is a much larger community. And so we look forward to them doing it again, and they're already planning on things to make it better for next year. So I wanted to let people know about that. And then the only other thing to report was, in the last several weeks, we've had some really good community-sponsored craft fairs that I've attended, because I love craft fairs. We had one at the Richfield Community Center, and that was hosted by the Richfield Garden Club. They had another one at Wood Lake last weekend, and another one at St. Richards. So when you finished one, they encouraged each other to cross-circulate. Each church encouraged the other ones' guests to attend both, which I thought was a really nice idea. And finally, for anybody who is looking for something to do on November 21, which is a Friday evening, St. Richards is hosting a talent show. It's free to the public, and you're welcome to attend, starts at 7 o'clock.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tomorrow night is Veterans Day, and we are going to have a, looks like a short celebration at 5 o'clock at Vets Park. Part of the Beyond Yellow ribbon always followed that we weren't going to leave it unattended for Vets Day. We're going to do something every day. So we will have a short celebration based on the weather, and it does get dark about 5 o'clock, so wear something warm. Also, those that are interested, I'll bring up that we are having a MAC Noise Oversight Committee on the 19th. It's at MAC at 1 o'clock, and it's on 20th Avenue. I think the meetings after this will be starting to be held at Richfield. I'm not sure of the dates, because they're going to be redoing their room. But if any citizens wish to attend or may comment, you'd have to see me before the meeting, so that we can sponsor you for a comment or whatever. But if you wish to attend, it's again 1 o'clock at the MAC building, offices on 20th Avenue. And I want to acknowledge the Halloween we had. It seems like Richfield always gets the great numbers. I talked to, you know, my morning coffee clutch, and some of them didn't even empty out a bag of candy. And with the weather net this year, I still had 52 people come to my door. And I would acknowledge too that I think a couple of our houses made it on the news for their great presentations.
I was putting them on Facebook, they're fabulous.
And I think we might get close to taking Anoka down for that Halloween capital of the world, but I wanted to acknowledge that, so...
It was a fun Halloween.
And the other thing I was going to mention, I received comments, I mentioned this about at least a year ago when we always approve these liquor licenses. Minneapolis is repealing that ratio for food and that. And a couple of our liquor establishments asked if I'd bring it up again, because if you go look at what it costs you for a craft beer, it's more than a burger now. And so I would like the council maybe to look at the thing, because I really truly do believe that it's all in the books anyways. I don't, I'm not convinced that everybody's selling over 51% in food. And that, and I think to keep modest and to make it really viable and the price of craft beers, and they're trying to keep their food levels cheap too, so people buy more. So it's kind of like buying off the, you know, the, making it equal. So I'd like the council to look at that again in lieu of what Minneapolis just did in repealing that.
Maybe we could get a study session around that and see what other cities are looking and doing, that would be great. I have a couple of discussion items. Mostly, I just wanted to let those folks who came, we had a speaker about e-cigarettes and wanting us to look at that. I actually have been watching this and have asked council for more information. I also know that Bloomington is having a forum on this, and I've asked city staff to gather around and get the information from that forum. I'm not against robbing great legislation from other cities and looking what they're doing too, and seeing how we could do something in a collective, especially since we share the Boards of Health. And it's, our Advisory Board of Health is all looking at this too. I think it's timely and it's a good thing to be doing. I also wanted just to ask staff, you know, we did okay at Charter School, but I have not seen anything over there. Is there any update on that, of why they have not yet come into there? There's some issues, they're jumping over, some problems?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Yeah, my understanding, we have asked them about that. They were, they're located out of Illinois, and they have a number of schools in Illinois. Their board delayed the commencement of this location because other schools that were closer on their queue were taking longer to get started up. So it's, they still intend to come to Richfield. I believe that they will have to come and ask for an extension of their land use approvals. Those approvals only last a year. So I think we'll hear back from them, but they still are intending to come in.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I also have on here that we have to look at canceling the December 23, 2014 regular City Council meeting, unless people really want to show up that close to Christmas. I didn't think so. We may need a special, a quick meeting for the Comcast deal, you know, when that comes through. So I need to move that, don't I? I'll make a motion, I'll make that a motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
It's approved. We will cancel the December 23, and we may have a special one. At this time, we'll go down to item seven, and I believe Councilmember Fitz Henry, you have that one. Nope, sorry, sorry, eight.
I do have.
No, I can't see that paper, it's tiny.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The item under consideration is a public hearing, consideration of a resolution granting a conditional use permit and a variance to allow expansion of an existing sober house facility known as Progress Valley at 308 78th Street East. Progress Valley Incorporated, known as Progress Valley, is a nonprofit organization that has been providing chemical health treatment services to adults since 1972. They have operated a 28-bed facility at 308 78th Street East in Richfield for 35 years. Progress Valley is requesting permission to expand and remodel their building. The purpose of proposed expansion will not increase the number of persons treated at the facility, but rather it will bring the building into compliance with the number of current code requirements, being bedroom size, Americans with Disability Acts, and kitchen facilities, and provide additional group and individual meeting spaces and office areas. In 2005, the city adopted an I-494 corridor master plan, which has since been incorporated into the city's comprehensive plan. The following year, the city codified zoning regulations to aid in the implementation of this corridor plan. In acknowledgement of the fact that some existing buildings and uses would be made non-conforming by these changes, the city included provisions allowing limited expansion, so long as certain conditions can be met. Legally non-conforming buildings are permitted to expand with City Council approval of a conditional use permit. The code does not put a dimensional limitation on this expansion. Legally non-conforming users can request a conditional use permit to expand by up to 10% of the existing gross floor area provided. That use does not significantly impede implementation of goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Progress Valley is requesting a variance to allow them to expand the building by 50% or 4,488 square feet. However, this does not include any actual intensification of their services. Does staff want to make a comment before we open it up to the public hearing?
I would say that we did receive eight letters that are included in the packet. All eight letters were supportive. We've received a number of phone calls. The phone calls were either just to clarify, clarifying questions, or were phone calls in support, so we didn't get any phone calls that were negative. And I can tell you, you know, I've been a staff person in community development for 15 years. I've never once heard a problem with this facility. So that's all I would have to add.
The public hearing is open. Would anyone like to come? Is anybody here from, please come up and say great things if you'd like. I read the letters too, I was very impressed.
I'm Suzanne Lambert, and I'm the Executive Director of Progress Valley. And I've been in that position not quite 10 years. And I don't know what you want me to say, I could go on and on about what we do and how we do it. So I wanted to be here to answer any questions. We've been around for over 40 years as an organization, and we've been at that particular location since 1978. And then we actually bought the building from a something church in 2004. And we've been providing chemical health treatment services again since 1978. And it's been a very wonderful location for us. It works very, very well for the clients that we serve, local transportation, a lot of great resources, jobs at the Mall of America. It's been, it's been a wonderful location for us, and it's just been great working in this community.
Well, I was really impressed that you're using all the money, really not to increase capacity, but to make great changes and to bring things up to compliance and code, thank you. Not everybody thinks of that. And I'm hoping you have a really good capital campaign that allowed you to do this very nicely.
Actually, we are probably not going to have to go through out of a capital campaign. We have been saving for decades.
Okay.
So we've needed to make the site larger so that we could make all these changes on behalf, really on behalf of the other people that we serve. So we're ready now to do it.
Okay.
We're looking forward to it. It's very exciting.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments?
Well, I can make a comment. Of all the facilities, when I was a police officer, we never had to go to your facility. It was interesting, we knew about it, and it was usually not your clients where we had to show up, it was maybe a relative or something. But I was impressed for all the good things you do there that we didn't have any police action there. Because usually those type of facilities are always under the scrutiny of everybody, and they get more calls, but yours did not.
When I see so many, much need when I talk to Linda Slough about sober schools and so many other things, we need in our communities to help our young folks tackle some of these problems. So thank you for what you do.
Great, thank you.
And I can safely say, I didn't even know you existed, so I'm happy to hear what a good job you're doing.
Yes.
Sometimes, you know, coming in under the radar is, can be a real good thing. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to come forward to speak?
Move to close?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is closed. Councilmember?
Okay, then, what I recommend, that we approve the resolution granting a conditional use permit and variance to allow the expansion of an existing sober house facility at 308 78th Street East.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Sandow.
Thank you. This is a consideration of a second reading of an ordinance establishing a 12-month moratorium on new establishments allowing indoor smoking or sampling of tobacco or similar products, and a resolution authorizing summary publication of the ordinance. And the Minnesota Clean Air Indoor Act was enacted to protect employees and the general public from the hazards of secondhand smoke by eliminating smoking in public places, places of employment, public transportation, and at public meetings. And public place means any enclosed indoor area used by the general public. And the Clean Air Act, however, does allow customers to sample tobacco products in certain tobacco retail establishments as defined by statute. This act allows cities and counties to enact and enforce more stringent measures to protect individuals from secondhand smoke. In other words, the cities can prohibit the sampling of tobacco if they wish to do so. And Richfield currently has three establishments that offer sampling of tobacco or e-cigarettes. And we've also received an inquiry regarding an establishment wishing to offer indoor smoking or sampling. And currently, our code does not prohibit sampling of tobacco, and thus it's allowed under state law. So what's being proposed is a recommendation that we adopt a 12-month moratorium before we consider adding any additional smoking or sampling establishments so that we can study the issue and take any actions that we might deem as necessary. During the moratorium period, no new establishments may allow indoor smoking or sampling. And although the city could legally apply this to existing establishments that already do offer the sampling, staff is currently recommending that existing businesses be exempt from the moratorium and future ordinance amendments, if any. So at this point, I will move that we approve the second reading of an ordinance establishing a 12-month moratorium on the consideration of any new establishments requesting to allow indoor smoking or sampling of tobacco or similar products, and that we also approve a resolution authorizing a summary publication of the ordinance to establish the 12-month moratorium.
I'll second that.
Discussion? And I know we had one person who wanted to come up and speak. Chris, would you like to come up in about three minutes or so? Talk to us, right up there, and state your name and address as like you would if you were at the forum.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Chris Farmer-Leece. I live at 2652 13th Avenue South, Minneapolis, but I really like Richfield, my family is from here.
Great.
Glad to be here tonight. I work for the Association for Nonsmokers. We're a small nonprofit that works on tobacco policy. Some of you might remember, we sent a letter on this subject to members of the council back in July. We've been around since 1974 or 1973? I can't remember. About 40 years of working on clean indoor air, reducing the harm of tobacco and smoking for Minnesotans. I'm just here tonight to speak briefly. I've heard a lot of great things, a lot of support on the council for public health, so I've been really happy to hear that. So I'll spare you the whole list of reasons why I think this moratorium is a great idea. Just in brief, a number of cities have already adopted a similar, or have already adopted ordinances to address the sampling loophole. I think our last count, which was a couple of weeks ago, was 49 cities that have done indoor tobacco sampling. A smaller number of cities have addressed indoor electronic cigarette use in a more general sense in a clean indoor air ordinance. Last count, that was 15 cities, I think, including Adina, Eden Prairie, and Savage. And I think somebody mentioned that Bloomington is also considering the same, so is Minneapolis. So we're seeing a lot more cities pick up on that too. And a previous speaker on this issue actually mentioned some new figures. I said I wasn't going to hit you with too much public health stuff, but this is actually new data, it came out at about 10:30 this morning. The 2014 Minnesota Youth Tobacco Survey, for the first year, is asking students about electronic cigarette use. As mentioned earlier, 28.4 of high school students have ever tried an electronic cigarette. And 12.9% of high school students in Minnesota have used or tried electronic cigarettes in the last 30 days. So we're definitely seeing the use rates of these things go up. So a big part of that is the new normalization of tobacco use through indoor electronic cigarette use. So really happy to see that. I just want to kind of get in front of this and offer the City Council and any members of staff if they need more information or materials from the Association for Nonsmokers. We work with a number of cities on these very same issues, so. Very much all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
May I ask a question of you? You mentioned there's 49 cities that have adopted... I forget, what was the specific thing you said?
A prohibition on indoor tobacco sampling.
Sampling, okay.
So combustible tobacco, as you probably know, it's specifically, the big push for that is hookah lounges. A lot of cities have had issues with hookah lounges, so.
And did those cities have any instances such as we have where we already had some establishments in place first?
Yeah, absolutely.
And did they still prohibit it?
Yes, I would say grandfathering in existing businesses.
They did grandfather the existing businesses?
Not in every case, but it does happen, yep.
Okay.
I know it was specifically, oh. You know what, I don't know specifically, I can't remember, we just did, we just did it the other way. They didn't exempt anybody from it.
Okay.
Okay.
It happens both ways.
Thank you for coming tonight, thank you for waiting.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Council discussion?
I guess I'm likely to take a hard nose on this one. I would not exempt pre-existing things. I mean, the Indoor Act may allow it, but I think it's bad practice, and we already have high numbers of students using it. So I mean, we have a moratorium, and I have no problem voting for that. But I guess if I were voting in the future, which I won't be... if I were voting in the future, which I won't be, I might, I might be tougher. So, there you are.
Let's talk to our, our former police officer. Tell me about this. What's your thoughts on this?
Well, I, I think, you know, I don't want to do harm to those businesses that already moved in with the pretense that it was allowed then, but I think this 12 months is good to let us get a handle on how things are changing rapidly right now. I also agree with the fact that maybe we want to think about an ordinance in public places for e-cigarettes, same as regular cigarettes. So, I would suggest if we're going to do that, maybe we dovetail that on this also prohibiting the use in public places. And do we have to hold up to the 12 month here if we decide that things are moving fast? We can go ahead and push an ordinance through faster?
Mayor and council, yes, certainly. We, we can rescind the moratorium and, and act quicker. That's just, we did it that way just to give, to be sure that we had enough time so that we wouldn't have to go and extend it, but yes, it can be rescinded.
I think our Public Health Commission ought to be.
Will be engaged. We'll make sure that.
Involved and get back to us on this one, on both of them. And I like your idea of prohibiting the e-cigarettes in the public.
Oh, yeah, I've seen them out of the Mars and Champs. And there's nicotine in there, and I, yeah, there's vapors from that. I'm, I'm also concerned about some of these establishments, too, not having separate air handlers for the cigarettes. I know in the places of employment where they allow smoking lounges inside there, they have isolated the, the air intake and outtake and ventilation so that it's not impacting other people, because it will, it will impact other people. And I don't know, I, I don't know what an ordinance is going to look like in the future, but that would be something I'd like to see us look at, because if you're, if you're not that employee standing in there, they don't smoke, they're in there because they need the job, they shouldn't be impacted by that. It should be a separate room or something if they're going to, going to do that. So, I know it's a cost or an expense to people, but it's a huge health issue, and we all pay for that.
That's true.
I don't know, as we move forward. Okay. There's been a motion, it's been seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I have the next two, two items. This is a consideration of a resolution authorizing condemnation of property for the reconstruction of Portland Avenue. The Portland Avenue Reconstruction Project requires the purchase of permanent and temporary easements on 85 parcels. Offers were presented to all identified parcel owners, either in person or by mail, by October 24th, 2014. As of Monday, November 10th, easements are expected to have been secured voluntarily on 43 of those parcels. In order for the project to stay on schedule and secure federal funds, all right-of-way acquisitions need to be completed by March 1st of 2015. This timeline requires that the condemnation process begin by November 15th, 2014. As advised by legal counsel, the list of properties in the resolution includes all those parcels for which an easement has not yet been recorded. This means the list is currently includes some properties that have agreed to the easement purchase, but for which the easement has yet to be recorded. The voluntary acquisition process will continue concurrently with the condemnation process in the hopes that the condemnation can be avoided in most cases. For all cases, parcels listed will be removed from the condemnation proceedings as offers are accepted and easements are recorded. It is expected that due to issues such as foreclosure, probate, or title concerns, or general disagreement with the project, some parcels will continue to go through the entire condemnation process. So at this time, I'll make a motion so we can discuss. The motion is to adopt the resolution authorizing condemnation of properties as listed for the Portland Avenue Reconstruction Project. Second. Does staff have any updates or anything that they'd like to share with us? Mr. Easley?
Well, yeah, maybe I'll have Jeff Pearson, our transportation engineer, kind of give a rundown of where we're at as of this morning, I think, with, with the negotiation.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff report says 43. Actually, we got the most recent update this morning. We're up to 46 that have either signed or have a appointment to sign those. So we're chugging along and moving forward that number. And then I expect a considerable amount here that are just in the process of negotiating a additional, whether it's a additional cost for a tree or some landscaping, they go out and get the, the quote for those type of things, and then provide them to our right-of-way specialists, and he gets the approval to add that to the set. So, you know, it, it is not an instant process, but we're, we're making progress here and trying to keep everything on schedule for that, for that spring.
Councilmember?
Jeff, what's probably the largest easement width? I know you're, some of them are temporary, but.
So that, so that easement depth along the corridor is, is no more than four feet for the permanent easements. So it's, it's really a reminder to both the council and, and audience members that this, this easement is, is strictly because we're adding boulevards along the roadway. So the roadway itself is, is getting slightly narrower, curb to curb, but again, adding that six-foot boulevard space between the sidewalk and the curb allows a couple of things. First and foremost, first and foremost, snow storage. And on a day like this, if we had 12 inches of the, of snow out there, you'd really see it, but luckily or unluckily, depending on what you, what you like, we didn't get that. But that six feet will really help both keep costs lower on the maintenance involved with snow removal, but also allow us to remove that snow in a, in a more timely manner. So, that's one reason. And then the other reason is just for the, for pedestrian and, and for one, and the trail on the, on the east side, just for the pedestrian and trail user, just the, both the safety and just the feel of that being separated from the roadway a little bit. So, it has a couple of benefits, but because we're adding that six-foot boulevard, moving the, the sidewalk back, we do need in a couple of spots, some extra feet to do that. So, that's more.
Okay. Please.
And I, I appreciate you saying that, because the comments were, people thought the roadway was coming up next to their door, when really the roadway doesn't change, but some better amenities come up to their doors.
And actually, the roadway is narrower.
Yeah.
Slightly. Yep, we're going to a little narrower lane, so that pulls the, the curb in.
And hopefully, this also slows down the traffic.
That's our hope. And we've got some other elements out there, medians and stuff, that will help pedestrian crossings, but also we're hoping that will also slow down traffic.
And, and is it true, we, we've never really had to go through condemnation yet, have we? We've always been able to negotiate something out? We try to be as reasonable and as helpful for folks as we can?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, on residential properties, if I'm not mistaken, John Stark could really help, help me out here, but I, I don't believe we've ever had to go through to the end of the condemnation process. However, with banks, and if you're in a foreclosure process and probate, in order to get the discussion started and in a timely way, this is a way that forces that issue.
Yeah. So we are offering people fix up the, the tree or the whatever we disturb or make it better for them.
Correct. So the, the project itself will put a tree in the boulevard. Additional, you know, if they have a tree that gets affected with the project, we replace that at a two-to-one ratio. So they get the quote for that, and they might choose to replant or, or, or not, but there will be a tree in the boulevard as part of the project.
Okay, great.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I should say that, you know, with 86 properties, there are some that, that do not like the project, don't want to cooperate. There are a few of those. I would say that's a clearly a minority. I think the indication that Jeff gave that once we've talked to the people and worked out the, the condemnation amount, and if they have any special circumstances, we're working through that right now, but the vast majority are coming to agreement on. And it's, it's those that are in foreclosure and probate, and, and those ones that really don't like the project that, that we may, that will linger. Let's put it that way.
Okay. All right.
And I think the only thing, other, other thing I'll add is that, that note that you emphasized about who is included on this list, and right now it is, includes anybody that hasn't been recorded, which I think is basically all of them, maybe one or two exceptions. But we expect that number, just before we even get to the filing, to, to come down as they get recorded. But then certainly, in the near future, things will be crossed off as we get more and more recorded. And that, that, going that route, there was some back and forth on that about if they've signed the agreement, they need to be listed, and, and the, the recommendation from attorney, from our attorney was to, to get that list so that we don't have to backtrack. If we, if something goes wrong in the future, we don't have to backtrack, come back to the council.
Yeah, I'm sure a lot of people don't necessarily care to be up on that list.
No, yeah, we're.
I understand that. It's illegal.
Yeah, I would like to eliminate everybody we possibly can.
Yes, okay. Well, we'll do the best we can. And hopefully, we don't have some snowbirds that are gone, too. That's going to be difficult as well. We can track everyone down. Okay. Thanks for your hard work. Appreciate it. Other comments or things? There's been a motion, and it's been seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are on to item 11. This is consideration of authorizing the Richfield Housing and Redevelopment Authority and its staff to negotiate a preliminary development agreement and/or purchase agreement with the Donald James Group for the former city garage site pending later city council ratification. On October 20th, 2014, Donald James presented a concept plan to a concurrent work session of the city council and the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, the HRA. The proposal calls for the redevelopment of the 7,600 block of Pleasant and Pillsbury Avenue with approximately 44 for sale townhomes. The portion of this site that previously contained the old city garage building is owned by the city, while the HRA owns the remainder of the site. At the work session, council members and HRA commissioners expressed support of the concept of medium density to for-sale townhomes on this site. There were, however, concerns about the site layout and building materials and architecture. The prospective developer has since engaged a different architect to devise a plan that better addresses these concerns. With policy level support of the proposal, the next step would be to draft a preliminary agreement that would grant the developer exclusive rights to make proposal and would have provisions that require the developer to compensate the city, HRA, for staff and consultant expenses. In an effort to eliminate redundant activities, staff has recommended that the city and HRA enter into joint agreements with Mr. James rather than each drafting and approving separate agreements. Both the city and council and the HRA express agreements with this recommendation at the work session. So I'll make the motion so we can have discussion. The motion is to authorize the Richfield Housing and Redevelopment Authority and its staff to negotiate a preliminary development agreement and/or purchase agreement with the Donald James Group for the former city garage site pending later city council ratification.
Second.
Council, any conversations or questions?
I, I just have one comment. Now, there, how long do they tie this property up for before they have to? You know, we ran into that issue before and that question before, so I'd like it answered so the public can understand how long it might be that this property would be tied up before they have to jump, so.
Sure. Yep, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The, that's what will be in the, in this preliminary agreement. You know, I would take any suggestions you might have. I, I think we were talking about until the end of February or March with the developer. They're anxious to get going, and so they don't want to have this lingering any, any longer. So I, I think that that's what we're looking at, definitely within six months.
Okay.
That, that.
That's nice.
That's impressive. I, I figured you were going to give them a year or so, but I like that answer you gave us better.
Okay. I understand that there's been some architectural changes or anything like this. Do we have something?
I just have a, a rendering showing the fronts of the, of the buildings, and the developer is here tonight.
Would you like to come forward, please? Mr. James? Talk to us? This is what happens when you come, show up at the meetings. And, and you can go to the mic over there. Please.
He can help you.
He can, he can help you get that on the overhead.
And if the cameraman can put that on the overhead. There we go.
Oh, wow. That's very different than what we saw before.
Yeah. The, I'm, I agree with some of the comments from the council people, mayor. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
Mr. Fitz Henry, thank you for your service. I won't be there tomorrow night, but.
Thank her, she's the one that leaves.
Yeah. Anyway, the first architect, I've used him on remodels and things like that, but he didn't quite get what I was looking for. And one of the things that always bothered me is looking at houses that looked like there's a garage with a house attached to it. I hate that look. So what we've done here is we've done actually a boulevard in front, so the tunnels will be facing each other with a green space in between. On the backside of this is an alley with garages on both sides going in the garage, too. These are all two-car garages. These are 18 to 2,200 square feet. Will run about 240 to 290 at retail price, depends on amenities. The options are gourmet kitchen or a regular kitchen, and finished recreational on a lower level or not finished. So, and then there's a little bit difference in size, so that's what the difference is. The end units, of course, will be nicer, a little bit bigger, a little bit higher dollar. So, but this, this is a much better looking development than I, I proposed the first time, and I apologize for not having it done right the first time, but I listened and I agreed.
Okay. Questions? Go ahead, go ahead, council.
Yeah. I, I just want to make it clear from what you're saying. The old layout had the garages and the houses facing the streets with housing across the street. And are you saying now that they're going to face inward each other with the garages off the back?
Um, there's the garages in the back of these, so on the back of this, when you're, in the back of this, when you'll see the garage across the alley from you as well.
Okay, so that the.
Much like the record city where you'll see across the alley and back of that house, too.
So the garages will be back to back?
Back to back. That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, to finish that, then, Pillsbury, we'll see something similar to what you just showed us. Residents over there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what about this, the green space that you're in, park area and barbecue grill?
There's going to be two. And both of those are going to be combination areas of old park areas, a gazebo sitting area, and mailboxes.
Oh, okay.
So there's two mail, drop areas, community mailbox area as well.
Okay.
We're kind of making multi-use spaces out of those.
Oh, okay. Well, I look forward to seeing some of the updates.
Me, too.
Thank you.
And that was the councilperson Fitz Henry, that was an excellent question about timing on this, too. We're looking to get started as soon as possible.